... the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice as our own.
Good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is a proclamation, a proclamation that I'm pleased to announce, the America's Recycles Day, November 15th, 2017. The proclamation reads as follows: Each year, the United States generates more than 250 million tons of municipal solid waste. That's more than four pounds per person per day. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, our nation has reached an overall recycling rate of approximately 34.5 percent. Each year, our national recycling rate. It sends 87 million tons of material to useful second life instead of the landfill. Saves the same amount of energy consumed by over 10 million US households in a year. And avoids greenhouse gas emissions equivalent to removing more than 33 million cars. But much more can be done. The proclamation goes on to say, whereas to focus the nation's attention on the importance of recycling, business, industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles Day and are encouraging their friends, neighbors, and coworkers to pledge to learn more about recycling options in their community and commit to recycling more materials. And whereas participating in the America's Recycles Day 2017 is one way citizens can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste by reusing recycling and buying recycled content products. And whereas city leaders can also use this as an opportunity to spread the word about the excellent recycling programs that have been established, the growth of markets for recyclable materials, and the importance of buying recycled products. Now therefore, I stand where Mayor of the City of Beatrice do proclaim Wednesday, November 15th, 2017, as America Recycles Day in Beatrice, Nebraska. Witness my hand an official seal of the City of Beatrice this sixth day of November 2017. And I have a certificate to present to Linda Grell, the Executive Director of Keep Beatrice Beautiful.
A picture for the radio, Doug?
A picture for the radio, Doug?
Well, thank you very much for this proclamation. We do encourage people to buy recycled and look for recycled products. And we're having an all metals recycling collection, and you can bring anything from bolts to refrigerators, well, no refrigerator stoves, can't have the free-on, down to sanitary garbage. We're partnering with them, we're a recycling center. And so we are going, if the proceeds from it, if we, hopefully we make enough, we've had a request from the preschool over at Cedar for a recycled park bench. They cost about $350. So if we get $350, we'll buy an eight-foot recycled park bench for them. So it's a good use of the money. So we hope people, if you have anything of metal that's around, just take it down to the recycling center, and they'll put in a roll-off down there.
What day was recycling for the metals?
What, I'm sorry?
What day?
What day for recycling?
Oh, it started November 1st, and it goes through Saturday, November 18th.
Do you have a few more members of your Keep Beatrice Beautiful Committee with you?
Yes, I do. We're gonna do the tree program.
Okay. Great.
Thank you for this. See, I brought along my helpers tonight, and Joyce Blackwell, who's the Chairman of Keep Beatrice Beautiful, Dick Cundy, who's the Treasurer. I'd like to acknowledge Dwight, who's also the Vice President of Chairman of our Board. And then Mark Pethod is back here, and he's also on our Board of Directors, so preaching in there tonight. This is just a presentation, and sorry, these checks are so big, but we had these made to do tree programs and to show, take the pictures with the trees. And when you have an eight-foot tree, you gotta have a little bit bigger check. So with me tonight, I would like to thank, especially, I'd like to thank Mark Pethod, Director of City Properties, Public Properties, and the hard-working employees of the city in that department, who planted lots and lots of trees this summer and this fall for Keep Beatrice Beautiful. Mark and his crew handpicked the trees, and they were brought into the shop. Then when they planted them, they had to load them up again, and dig the holes, and plant the trees. And as Mark says, the success of a successful tree, living, is not necessarily just planting it, but it's the care that it gets afterwards for not only the first year, but many years after that. And he said 133 trees have been planted this year. I just wanted to say that Keep America Beautiful grants that we received this year, we're thrilled by them. They're all such an honor. There are 600 affiliates across the United States, Keep America Beautiful affiliates, and they're all open to apply for these grants if they're in good standing. And good standing just means that your reports are in, and you've paid your affiliate dues, and have done all the reports for them. So the first check we'd like to present, we actually already presented to the city. We wrote the check on October 10th, so it could go ahead in the last year's fiscal year. And this is for a Community Trails Grant, and it was a $5,000 check that we got from Keep America Beautiful. It was to enhance the two miles of the Chief Standing Bear Trail within the City of Beatrice. And there was one trail site chosen per state, so it was even a greater honor. We had a lot of affiliates in Nebraska that applied, but there was, we were the only one in Nebraska. As to show you what an honor it was, the one in Colorado was the Rocky Mountain Trail Ridge, the one that was chosen in Colorado. So we planted 38 to eight-to-10-foot trees on September 19th, and also 30 colorful shrubs. So we'd like to thank Boy Scout 221 and Brian Dakey, the troop leader, for helping plant these trees and shrubs. Also helping was the Homestead Running Club, the Big Blue Bike Club. An example of the trees planted were maple, cotton, coffee tree, red oak, Norway spruce, and black hill spruce, plus a lot of others, and then the colorful shrubs. So that was the first check we got, grant we got from the Keep America Beautiful. The second grant we got was the Keep America Beautiful UPS Community Tree and Recovery Tree Planting. It was also in the amount of $5,000. We received that this summer. There were 21 states, 21 grants awarded across the United States that resulted in 1,200 trees being planted across the United States. There were 15 tree recovery grants of 5,000, three post-recovery grants of 5,000, and then two large-scale grants of 10,000 across the United States. I'm just gonna share with you, it's just, I think it's important to know who got these grants, just a couple of them. They were Tampa, Florida, Miami, Florida, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and Nashville, Tennessee, Knoxville, Casper, Wyoming, Moline, Illinois, the State of Ohio, and the State of Georgia. So that's the competition. So we were very thrilled to receive this. Also wanted to mention that Cass County and Lewisville, Nebraska, received one of the $5,000 checks. So we had two of us in Nebraska. So once again, 80 to, 80, not, 50, eight-to-10-foot native trees were planted. And the grant was to help communities that had lost a significant number of trees due to a disaster. So these were from the two 100-year floods in 2015 that consecutively left a lot of the trees in Riverside Park, Chicago Park, and the Scott Street Ball Diamonds in water for several weeks. And a good many of those trees died. And Mark had them removed, so these are the ones that were planted back at, we planted them at Scott Street Ball Diamond area. So I'd like to thank Ted for organizing the UPS volunteers to come out last week and help plant the trees, and also assisting with some board members and volunteers. So thank you for that. And so we greatly appreciated that grant also. So the third grant was from the terrific windstorms we had on June 17th. And as you remember, there we had 45 minutes of straight-line winds, about 75 miles an hour, and did terrible destruction, not only to all the homes and Beatrice homeowners and the trees, but also to our city parks. And so a grant came through on July 6th, 2017, and this was a Keep America Beautiful Anheuser-Busch Community Restoration Grant. And there were four grants given in the United States of $10,000. And we were fortunate to be one of those that were the winners. So an example of what they wanted to look for was community and public space cleanup or restoration. So we did apply, going backwards, we did apply on July 26th, and were notified that we were one of the winners of $10,000. In this one, the other communities in the United States were the Keep Indian River Beautiful in Florida, the Golden Islands of Georgia, and Keep Res Beautiful in Mississippi. This grant was totally for the replacement of trees over in Riverside Park. It is estimated that about 100 trees, 75 to 100, I'm not sure Mark could probably correct me, but these trees were 50 to 75 years old that were taken down. The cottonwoods, willows, and oak trees were shredded, topped, split, and destroyed. So the city property employees and their volunteers planted 65 trees in the Riverside Park in October and November. The grant also paid for the tree spade and tree trunk wraps to protect the trees from the deer. This final submission of this grant is due in December of this year. So I'd like to thank once a year, once again, Mark Pethod and the Public Properties Committee Department for planting the trees and for nurturing their growth throughout the next long years. And we look forward to some beautiful trees in the future. Thank you for my volunteers. And just want to end with a Chinese proverb, and it said, "The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago; the second-best time is now." So we have written checks this morning for the rest of these grants, and so total, we gave the city $20,000 for the three grants. So, thank you.
Excellent. Linda, thank you very much. Okay, to continue, we will start with the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on October 16th, 2017, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of minutes of work session on October 30th, 2017, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item F, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $356,677.29. Item G, approval of Boswar report of claims in the amount of $22,475. Item H, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. Item I, recommend approval of final pay request in the amount of $28,087.92 to Lotman Carpet and Construction Company for the Second Street Reconstruction Project, Ella de Grand Street, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item J, recommend approval of change order number two, a decrease in the amount of $1,612.97, and final pay request in the amount of $75,357.11 to RL Team and Construction Company for the Miscellaneous Concrete Repairs 2017 project, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K, approval of special designated license for CNC Processing, Inc. for a wine tasting on November 22nd, 2017, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 AM, at 2312 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item L, approval of special designated license for CNC Processing, Inc. for a wine tasting on November 24th, 2017, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 AM, at 2312 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item M, approval of special designated license for CNC Processing, Inc. for wine tasting on November 30th, 2017, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 AM, at 2312 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item N, approval of special designated license for CNC Processing, Inc. for a wine tasting on December 7th, 2017, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 AM, at 2312 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item O, approval of special designated license for CNC Processing, Inc. for a wine tasting on December 14th, 2017, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 AM, at 2312 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item P, Resolution Number 6129, executing an agreement amendment number three with the Firefighters Union Local Number 1098, to continue implementation of Kelly Days as the daily staffing and scheduling work hour requirement for firefighters for the Fire Department until September 30th, 2018. Item Q, Resolution Number 6130, executing the amendment to the License Agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc., in order to upgrade the software provided for necessary services to implement the new software and convert existing data files. Item R, Resolution Number 6131, entering into an addendum to the Emergency Dispatch Services inter-local agreement with the City of Crete, Nebraska, whereby the City of Beatrice, Nebraska agrees to provide IT support related to computer-aided dispatch, records management systems, mobile infield systems, and the City of Crete, to, the City of Crete agrees to pay funds. Item S, Resolution Number 6132, entering into a letter of agreement for professional services with Olson and Associates to undertake a water system study and provide general project administration required for the study, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item T, Resolution Number 6133, entering into a supplemental agreement number three with NDOR for project number ENH-3442, Control Number 13212, to add National Environmental Policy Act reevaluation work to the agreement and to increase consultants' compensation for additional work necessary to complete the bicycle pedestrian trail from the Water Park to Hannibal Park. Is there any item that anyone wants removed from the Consent Agenda? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that all the items listed under the Consent Agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that all items under the Consent Agenda be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Next is a public hearing. Public hearing to receive the semi-annual report of the Citizens Advisory Review, as provided by the Local Option Municipal Economic Development Act, Number 1943, and Tobias is going to further elaborate.
As everybody here knows, the CARC is supposed to meet at least semi-annually, and then they get a report to the city council. In their last meeting that they had, what they reviewed was the LB-840 funds available in cash at this time are about $726,000. So again, $726,000 available in LB-840 funds at this time. We do have a number of outstanding loans that are being repaid at various stages. And then CDBG, or Community Development Block Grant Funds, reused loans, these are ones where we have given out various CVG grants in the past through the state. We've gotten reimbursed or repaid over time, and those monies are now going to this reused loan fund. We currently have $179,000 available of those funds at this time.
Questions? From the audience? Recommend we close the public hearing.
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:17 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that the public hearing be closed at 7:17 PM. Your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Next item is Resolution, Resolution Number 6134, executing the general release to release and discharge Dempsters LLC and Ryan Mitchell regarding an LB-840 Economic Development Loan Agreement, Loan Extension Agreement, and Second Loan Extension Agreement.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6134 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Resolution Number 6134 be passed and adopted. Discussion?
I'm sure everybody's familiar with the history of this loan, but at one point, the city made a loan to Dempsters Industry, or Dempsters LLC, and to Ryan Mitchell, a couple of extensions. But all those funds have been repaid to the City of Beatrice, and so at this point, we just need to file a release, release all the collateral we had secured, including but not limited to his UCC filings. And so tonight, what we brought before you is just that general release for your approval, so we can go ahead and release the collateral, as I said, as the loan has been paid in full.
Any questions of Tobias? From the audience? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Resolution Number 6134 has been approved. Next item is Resolution Number 6135, entering into an agreement to loan $9,800 to David P. Leppant and Virginia K. Leppant for their building located at 119 North Street as part of the Downtown Facade Improvement Program and CDBG Grant 15-DTR-109.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6135 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, Resolution Number 6135 be passed and adopted. Discussion?
The same downtown grants we've done with everybody else. This one's for Leppant's Law Office there on North Fifth Street, as you see, for $9,800.
Refresh my memory, they have to put 75% more monies in on this thing, is that correct?
The grant required a minimum of 75% match. Every one of these loans is larger than that. So nobody got the total amount of grant funds available for their project. Everybody had to put in more money than the grant asked for. And that was in order to make more funds available to do more projects.
Any other questions? Public. All right, your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution Number 6135 has been approved. Next item is Resolution Number 6136, entering into an agreement to loan $8,000 to MDDS LLC, a Nebraska Limited Liability Company, for their buildings located at 420 Court Street, 422 Court Street, 105 North Fifth Street, and 111 North Fifth Street as part of the Downtown Facade Improvement Program and CDBG Grant Number 15-DTR-109.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6136 be passed and adopted.
Okay.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that Resolution Number 6136 be passed and adopted. Just a little more of the same, any?
This is McLean's. For those of you who are wondering who this MDDS is, it's McLean's. It's their building there at Fifth and Court. But yes, everything else in there is the same, same general terms as all the other loan agreements we've had.
Any questions?
That's the whole Schmitz.
Schmitz Building, yes. That might have been a better way to give everybody an idea where we're at.
Okay. Your vote, please, gentlemen. That is approved 8-0. Resolution Number 6136 has been approved. Next is Item D, Resolution Number 6137, entering into a service agreement with Eisenstein Mallunchuk LLP to present and help negotiate environmental insurance coverage claims on behalf of the City of Beatrice.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6137 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that Resolution Number 6137 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
So this has to do with our gas plant and what we've just been working on cleaning up with the DEQ and EPA over the last several years. This firm contacted me here probably about a month ago. What they do is nothing but these types of environmental claims throughout the country. That's what they specialize in. In theory, what it is, that insurance policies up until sometime in the late '70s, early '80s did not exclude environmental claims. And so if you can find your old policies from that time period, they can go back and file claims on those policies and seek reimbursement up into your claim limits at that time. And so we are currently looking for who was our insurance policies with at that time, what were policy numbers, what were claim limits at that time. We're looking for that information. If we can find it, turn it over to these guys, they will then go contact these insurance companies, file claims on our behalf, and work to get reimbursement for those various years. The theory is that the contamination moved every year, so therefore, every year is a new claim. And if you look through either the memo or the settlement or the agreement itself, this company, they take 35% of whatever they collect. And that includes, they don't charge you for additional fees or expenses, so it's 35% of whatever they collect, they keep, you get the other 65%. So if they're not able to track down $80, they don't get paid anything. You'll notice in the agreement, we excluded our current lawsuit against Aquila, and we excluded the current lawsuit against Kirk &amp; Michael. So we said, "We've already got those two working. Whatever we claim we collect, we get to keep that 100%." Anything with regards to this environmental, these insurance claims, they'll share in the proceeds with.
How successful have they been?
I would say fairly successful. These, one of these gentleman's an attorney, the other one's not. He left his large law firm in order to go do this specialty care. He made the comment on the phone that this has put several of his kids through college. So I think they've done well doing it.
Community college.
He didn't say, he just said college. I mean...
Well, we're really not out of anything.
Yeah.
By doing this. I mean, right now, it's zero. So we just as well have the opportunity to collect something.
As I, and it doesn't really make any difference, just a curiosity on my part. So does it follow, obviously, you go back to the old thing. So let's say that it was the Dwight Insurance Company, and he has subsequently sold his insurance company, and now it's the Billsbuck Insurance Company. Does it follow the policy as sold, or if one of the insurance companies had bankrupt, and another company had bought the assets of that? I mean, can you follow it up there, or does it die if that's the case?
I don't know for sure, and that's what these guys know, and that's what they do. It partly depends on how the policy was bought or sold over time. If you bought the assets out versus buying the company itself, that's all stuff that they know and track down and follow up on.
Yeah, I'm in the car with Stan on the deal. I mean, it doesn't cost us anything. We got a, you know, 65 cents of any dollar we get is 65 cents. So, but, so that, my question was just curiosity. I didn't know. So, okay.
Any other questions? Anybody? Audience? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution Number 6137 has been approved. Next item is an ordinance, ordinance vacating a portion of Madeline Street located in Millikens, addition to the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 17-034. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number 17-034. Title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Ordinance Number 17-034 by number the first time, ordinance Number 17-034 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 17-034 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance Number 17-034 be passed and appro-
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that ordinance Number 17-034 be passed and approved. Tobias?
So you have a couple of ordinances and a resolution tonight, all dealing with the same issue here. It came about when Robert Rayburn came to the Building Inspection Department wanting a fence permit so he could put up a fence around his garden that he has planted for decades. And upon review, it is determined that his garden, part of his garage and his other fence were not on property that he owned. And so rather than making him get rid of those things, we discovered they're on Madeline Street, which was platted back in the 1800s. As you can see, it's never been put in place. It's never been improved. And so what, the first step you have before you tonight is to vacate a portion of Madeline Street. The city council vacated a portion of it years ago and got rid of that portion of it. So we're recommending that we vacate this portion of it over here and also may transfer it to Mr. Rayburn. I believe he's agreed to pay $450, which is one of the later resolutions in this matter.
Questions? Comments?
Madeline Street's down along Grace Thayer, that portion of town, LaSalle, it'd be south of LaSalle Street. So if you're trying to get an idea of where it's at.
I can honestly say I've not seen that street sign.
Sean Tronick lives on it.
Okay, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Ordinance Number 17-034 has been approved. Next is ordinance to, an ordinance to convey real estate in the 600 block of Grace Street owned by the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, to Robert L. and Brenda J. Rayburn.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 17-035. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that the ordinance be given number 17-035. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That's approved 8-0. Ordinance Number 17-035 by number the first time, ordinance Number 17-035 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 17-035 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance Number 17-035 be passed and appro-
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance- Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance number 17 dash zero three five be passed and approved. I think you've already explained it away. If there's any other questions? If there are none, your vote, please. And that is approved eight to zero. Ordinance number 17 dash zero three five has been approved. Next item is a resolution, resolution number 6138, entering into a contract for sale of real estate to Robert L. and Brenda J. Rayburn.
Mayor, I would move that resolution number 6138 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that resolution number 6138 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would note is it's $400, I said 450, it's $400, and it's a 25 by 140 foot stretch of property.
Okay. Any discussion? And your vote, please. That is approved eight to zero. Resolution number 6138 has been adopted. Next is an ordinance, ordinance vacating all of block 10 and 11 of Grable and Beachley's second addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, and lots 1, 2, 10, 11, and 12, and the north 30 feet of lot 9 in block 2, and all of block 3 of Grable and Beachley's addition to Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 17 dash zero three six, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number 17 dash three six, the title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. And your vote, please. That is approved eight to zero. Ordinance number 17 dash zero three six by number the first time, ordinance 17 dash zero three six by number the second time, and ordinance number 17 dash three six by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 17 dash zero three six be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance number 17 dash zero three six be passed and adopted. Tobias?
At our last meeting, we vacated a portion of Irving Street by Paddock Lane School, and we said that there would be another plat coming that would incorporate all of where Paddock Lane currently resides. This is that other plat that you see coming. The first step is to vacate the various lots and blocks where Paddock Lane exist. When we started talking to the school about the new building they're looking to build there, it became obvious it was easier to simply replat everything rather than try to keep the easements in there, and they're going to be building over lot lines and everything else. And so the first thing before you tonight is a vacation of those lots and blocks, and then the next one is the replat of everything as a Paddock Lane Elementary School addition. The only thing I will note is there's not a typo in your thing. Beachley's, it's spelled two different ways in the Resident Deeds Office. So the first Beachley's addition is without an E, and the second addition is with an E. I don't know which one's correct.
That's impressive.
Hey.
Abby do that for you.
Good catch.
Yes, she did. That's what I thought.
The Resident Deeds Office caught it for us when we filed the ordinance on the vacation of Irving Street.
Abby takes praise when we give it to you.
Any further discussion? All right, your vote, please. That is approved eight to zero. Ordinance number 17 dash zero three six has been approved. Next, a ordinance approving the plat of Paddock Lane Elementary School addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance be given number 17 dash zero three seven, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh. No.
Did you?
No.
Moved by, moved by Partey, that the ordinance be given number 17 dash zero three seven, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and said ordinance be read by number three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. And your vote, please. That is approved zero. Ordinance number 17 dash zero three seven by number the first time, ordinance number 17 dash three, zero three seven by number the second time, and ordinance number 17 dash three seven by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 17 dash zero three seven be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that ordinance number 17 dash zero three seven be passed and approved.
Picture of the plats on page 144 of your packet if you want to see it. There's nothing outstanding about the plat itself. I will just note that Plank and Zoning did recommend approval of this as well, so.
Questions? Anyone? All right, your vote, please. That is approved eight to zero. Ordinance number 17 dash zero three seven has been passed and approved. Next item is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Any council member have anything for the public forum? I have one thing. Last week, and you see the placard that's on the table out here, the Nebraska diplomats presented Beatrice with the Southeast Nebraska Community of the Year. Accepting that award was myself and Tobias Templemeier, Walker Zolkowski, the executive director of Engage, and Andrea Schaefer, president of Engage. And there was a very nice presentation that was made by the individual that was reading the accolades, and not only that, but Rare Earth Salts was named Innovator of the Year. So Innovator Business of the Year. So those were two of the four awards that were given out, and I think that was some really nice recognition for our community, and I think it tells us that we are determined to continue this economic development push, and that we're going to do whatever we possibly can and use whatever tools that are available to us to continue economic development. Anybody have any comments? All right, let's move on into discussion and reports and the strategic plan update.
So as you know, we're bringing back strategic plan about once every quarter to kind of review and go over things. If anybody's taking the opportunity to just kind of read through this, you'll see it's broken down into different segments, but a lot of it has to do with the look of the community, making sure it's, you know, kind of a little sprucing up of the community. And so you start looking at all the things we've accomplished on the environmental side, you know, store craft is coming, is coming down. The elevator is down and almost completed now. You've got Second Street, which is getting finished up here, bricks should start going in, bricks should start going in here in the next week.
Next Monday.
That's what we were told. And so you'll see that corridor really look nice once it's done. I think come springtime, you'll see us come back and plant some trees along the west side of that, that road there. Again, spruce that up. I think over the summer, you'll, or excuse me, over the winter, you'll see us go down into the land that we just bought along First Street there between Court and Grant Street. You'll see that area get cleaned up this, this winter as well. We've already got the trail for Dempsters to Trailhead Park laid out. I think you'll see that go off for bid here. We've got one little land parcel we're trying to possibly acquire. When I say small, it's less than about five square feet, and so we're trying to get that resolved. James thinks it looks better. And then you obviously saw Keep Beatrice Beautiful tonight and the grants that they have submitted on our behalf for all the trees that are planted. I mean, I think you start looking at all those things, that's not to mention the downtown revitalization that you're doing and the improvements you're starting to see with that going in. So I think you see great improvement on the environmental side. I would also note that the Phase Two on the Dempsters property is being completed this week, and so that's being done as well, and so we'll see what that ultimately comes back and says. On the government side, one of the things that it talked about doing in there was a rental inspection program. We had an initial meeting about that, but that has kind of been put on the back burner while we address nuisances in junk motor vehicles. So I think while you see staff time being devoted towards those things right now, that's why you don't see much, much movement forward on the rental inspection program at this time. The economy, that's another sector in there. You know, we heard Walker come talk to us a couple of weeks ago. You know, obviously you guys are well aware of the number of things that are out there. Infrastructure, again, we continue to work on those things. The one that right now that I'd like to see more movement on is fiber, getting fiber to the community. It's not from a lack of trying, but trying to get people down here and have the meetings and follow up with what they say they're going to do to keep moving those projects forward. That's been difficult to do, and so we keep pushing on that one. And then the last one they talk in there is about housing. You know, everybody knows what Goose and Wells and Mines and Fakler, those guys are out doing. Everybody knows Excel Development and that project moving forward, but you just had another TIF project that started this week. It's starting the process of going through TIF, CRA, met with it, P and Z will meet with it Tuesday, but that's up in the Hannibal View area. And I think if you look at all of these different housing projects that are outstanding, that are ongoing, each one is kind of a different niche. You have some of those looking for the upper end houses, you have others that are trying something different and going with the smaller homes, you have others are trying to become more workforce housing. So I think you see a broad spectrum of housing being built. It's not all in one segment, and so I think that's very encouraging and positive as we move forward. The last thing that lists under the housing area there is a land bank. That's something that only Omaha currently is allowed to have. I went to my league meeting this last week, and I think you'll see legislation introduced at the state level to make that available to all communities. There's still some downsides with having a land bank, but we're looking to see if we can't make that available and see if we can't add that to our repertoire of tools that we have as we move forward, looking to handle different properties around town. So all in all, I think we've made great progress. Obviously, still a lot to go, but I think we've made some great progress.
Rich?
Did you mention the property that just got cleaned up and we took title of down there on Second Street?
Yes.
Catlin property. One of those buildings, and one are we, it's not looking to have those buildings and stuff taken out of there.
It'll, it'll be a winter project.
This winter?
This winter is what we're looking at. Street Department's going to be the ones who do it, and so they need to make sure they have time to come in and get that done. They're running around frantically trying to paint the last few things before winter sets in, and they're trying to do some crack filling right now.
A little piece of property that someone else owns?
Mm-hmm.
Have we, are we trying to?
We've had some conversations. Hopefully we bring in something for discussion here soon.
Ted?
A couple of things. First of all, this, I saw Tobias had a little strategic plan, I still have my booklets here, too. If you, if you look on page 11 of that, there, there's three pictures, three photographs, and two of them are buildings that needed to be torn down that are now gone.
Yes.
So I just wanted to point out that, you know, I doubt that was a design as we, you know, they, they took these, this thing was given to us in 16, and so these photographs were probably taken in 14 or 15, but I just thought that was, you know, wanted to point that out. The other thing, but I did have one question as we talked about that area, the green belt space that we're acquiring from down there along the river between Second and the river. Where are we at with Co-op?
I believe that was the other property that Mr. Kerr was talking about, and so we have had some initial conversations with them, and hopefully we'll have something we can rack and have this body discuss at a future date.
Okay. Well, I just, I didn't know if you needed a segment of this body to contact a segment of that body, or if they were, if you guys were just handling it through the board.
We've had those conversations initially, so we are, been in contact with the Co-op and...
Okay. Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the public? All right, our next regular scheduled meeting is going to be on November 20th in these chambers at 7:00. Now, I'd recommend, Mr. Catlin, that we go into executive session.
Mayor, I would move that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 7:43 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that we go into executive session at 7:43 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate. Your vote, please. That is approved eight to zero. Thank you for coming.